The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Everybody, welcome everybody to the town council meeting February 7, 2017. Call this meeting to order and we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilor Giannelli?
Here.
Councilor Evans?
Here.
Mayor Podolski?
Here.
Councilor Letty?
Here.
Councilor Vanessa?
Here.
Councilor Russell?
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. Move on to the audience of citizens. At this point, anybody in the audience wants to speak? Yes, sir?
New business. I first want to congratulate you on your potential run. Hope you lose, but you know, nothing personal. I like you, but nothing personal with the mayor. But I'm talking, I came here to talk about certain things that were in the newspapers. I was going to write a letter to the editor, but I'm the type of guy that's vocal, so I want to just state my opinion. It was stated, let's talk about the charter revision.
Sam, give your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sam La Maglio, Hickory Hill Road. Let's talk about charter revision. It was stated in newspaper that charter revision didn't spend enough time on the charter. We only did it in a few months. It was rushed. When you're a charter revision member, and we had two attorneys, a mayor, former board of finance member, and a few other people that were with impeccable credentials, each one of us knew the charter inside and out. We would spend countless hours, sometimes to 2:00 in the morning, looking at the charter. The next day, we would go to different towns, talk to board of education, superintendent of schools, mayors, town managers, bounce different ideas off of them, and they had different towns, and they took the time to listen to us. So when we put the new charter together, it wasn't done in haste, it was done professionally. And then when we had the open town meetings with people in town and individuals say that we didn't listen to the people in town, well, the only people that came to me, let's be blunt about it, were political hacks on both sides, Democrats, Republicans, those are the people that come to those town meetings. And they all have vested interests. The actual people that counted, they didn't come, they went and voted. And the board of education question was answered. It was 4,555 people voted yes, 5,657 people voted no, 1,102 people said that they wanted to keep the board of education the way it was. And we as Republicans accepted the vote. We said, fine, we may have disagreed, but we accepted the vote. And the reason why I supported a partisan board of ed is because every time I went in front of a board of education years ago, they always looked at me as a Republican, and they always had the attitude that us Republicans then were never in favor of the board of education. I don't know why they thought that way. They all thought that when you have an R at the end, you didn't have any right to contribute to the education of this town. Well, you know what? We're compassionate conservative Republicans. We believe in education. We just don't believe in spending the amount of money that is spent on education today. What we believe in is that we like to look at all the programs, see which programs work, which programs don't work, and improve on the programs that do work. We're not big spenders, we're conservatives. So I wanted to set the record on that. I also wanted to set the record on that there was also said in the newspaper that the Republicans have no plan. Well, we do have a plan. We have a plan that says we believe in lower taxes. We believe in infrastructure spending. We believe in spending money in education where it counts. That's what we believe in. We believe in bringing businesses in town. We believe in controlling our bonding. That's what we believe in as Republicans. Again, we're compassionate people, us Republicans, okay? And then the mayor and the council, they inherited a big problem. They inherited 12 years of our taxes going up 350 percent. Our board of education salaries, especially administrative salaries, went up 250 percent in the course when the Democrats were in power. So when the Republicans took over, we made a commitment on trying to lower taxes, trying to control our bonding, and it's very hard right now because of all the problems. When the Democrats were in office, they didn't spend any money on infrastructure, and if they did, what they did was they bonded road projects, they bonded pavement, they leased trucks. They gave us such a big problem that we have to resolve these issues, and it takes a long time to resolve these issues. So to say that we don't have a plan, we do have a plan. Our plan is to fix all the problems that the Democrats did when they were in power for 12 years. Also, I want to hear and defend the mayor on the, I don't know what you want to call it, when the town manager left. Listen, the town is going to survive. Managers come and go, and if you know the charter, a town manager works for the party that's in power. When the Democrats were in charge, and they picked Denise McNair, and I'm not going to question her qualifications, they told our minority people that were around there, the two individuals, that their decisions, their input was not, didn't matter because they were in the minority. And they put Denise in charge. Denise, she was a Democrat, town committee member, elected board tax person who ended up getting a job there, and she was a state party central person, and naturally she's going to get a job as a town manager if you're, if you have credentials like that and the Democrats are in charge. That's okay, I accept that. But to say that the mayor fired her, or the mayor doesn't have a plan, the mayor's a gentleman, he's not going to tell people, if he made an agreement, he made a promise, or he signed a document and said that he wasn't going to share, it was confidential, between him and Denise McNair, then you know what? You got to respect the mayor because he honors that agreement, and I respect him for that. And I think the Democrats should respect him for that, instead of attacking him every single day for a commitment he made. Because let's face reality, Denise McNair was a big spender. She was part of the 350 percent tax increase. So, Mr. Mayor, I think, I think you're an honorable man, and I think you've done a great job. And if the Democrats want to find out, you could always ask Denise McNair. So the bottom line is, I just want to come here and defend the mayor, I want to defend the charter revision committee, I think we've done a wonderful job, and you have to look at it this way. The people in town voted no on the board of education, but they voted yes in the most important part of the revision. They voted for a board of finance, they voted to elect a mayor, and so those are the most important thing. And to say we didn't do our job, shame on anybody that insults the board of, the commission. Because when you're a commissioner member, or you serve on any board, people don't realize the amount of hours these individuals put in, and to criticize their actions because they either have a D or an R at the end of the name is wrong. So I just wanted to come here and say this, and say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for doing a good job.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll close that part of the audience of citizens, and we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have a motion, we've all read our consent agenda, and do we have a motion on it?
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept these six items on the consent agenda that is in front of us today.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to new business. Item number one. John?
Item number one is to approve the waiver of green fees for the Connecticut Open Qualifier to be held at Timberland Golf Course in July of 2017. The estimated fee waiver is an amount of $3,120, and John Zook is here to discuss it.
Hi, John.
Hi, how are you? Good evening. Connecticut State Golf Association has approached Timberland Golf Course to host the Connecticut Open Qualifier. If approved, this event would be held on July 12, Wednesday, July 12, 2017, from 7:30 a.m. to 12 p.m. This is the second biggest tournament in the state of Connecticut, second to the amateur, Connecticut amateur. The CSGA is, is estimated approximately 80 players that will be participating in this event, looking for a fee waiver of $3,120 in greens fees. Carts are optional in this, in this event, and if the players do decide to take carts, they'll be charged full price for the carts. CSGA, from statistical averages from past events, from these types of past events, estimate around 40, 40 to 50 percent of the players will take carts. That equates to $560, and we're estimating around 40 to 50 percent of the people will participate in the practice round. And this draws players from all over the state of Connecticut. So it might be people that would never ever play Timberland, so coming in to play Timberland for a practice round. And that equates to $1,404 for a total of estimated revenue of $1,964, and which would be a total estimate, I mean, I'm sorry, total estimated revenue waiver cost of $1,156. And the finals, the people that qualify for this event will play at Ellington Ridge Country Club. So this is a fairly prestigious event again for Timberland to be hosting.
Okay, thanks. Any questions of, Mr. Zook, while he's up here? We'll make a motion?
Move to approve the waiver of the greens fees for the Connecticut Open Qualifier to be held at Timberland Golf Course on Wednesday, July 12, 2017, with an estimated fee waiver in the amount of $3,120.
Second on that?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick question. Do we have an opportunity to make more revenue hiring caddies, or anything like that, instead of carts? Or is that?
It would be basically carts. I think most of the players might bring their own caddies.
So they bring their own, and you don't get anything from that?
Yes. And one other thing I neglected to mention was that the Hartford Current and the Britain Herald will be, they'll post results of this event, and it also will be featured on the CSGA website, and also featured on Connecticut Golf Online. So we will get quite a bit of exposure from this event and advertising.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some will.
Thank you.
Thanks. Number two.
And the next one is to approve the request of the 2017 Berlin High School graduating party to waive all fees associated with having a police, Berlin Police Officer at McGee School from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Sunday, May 21st, during the Berlin High School, Mr. Berlin High School competition. The total amount of the fee to be waived is approximately $350.
Okay, thanks. Motion on this?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the request of the 2017 BHS graduation party and to waive all fees associated with having a Berlin Police Officer at McGee from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Sunday, May 21st, 2017, during the Mr. BHS competition. The total fee, total amount of the fee to be waived is approximately $350.
Second on this?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number three.
The PTO at Willard Elementary School is hosting the annual pasta supper on February 23rd. It's no date to be February 24th. This fundraiser is for the PTO, which donates to local charities, the Berlin High School Graduation Party, Rotary Club, and other organizations. The event is to be held at the Berlin High School Cafeteria, and the board of education policy requires that a police officer be on hand when the facilities are used. The PTO is requesting a waiver on the cost of one officer, as expense would reduce the amount of money that raised to help support boards and other projects. The fee is approximately $250 to $300.
Okay, thanks. Motion on this?
Motion to approve the request of the Emma Hart Willard Elementary School PTO to waive all fees associated with the Berlin Police Officer at BHS on Thursday, February 23rd, 2017, during its annual pasta supper. The total fee to be waived is approximately $250 to $300.
We have a second on this?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. I would just like to comment, I saw Eva earlier, but I don't think she's here. It might be worth taking a look at PTO or school-related fee waivers over the course of the last couple of years, similar to what we did in the budget last year, Dave, with the fair, to see if there is kind of a trending amount that we waive each year for these types of things for PTOs, rather than them having to come to us every time. If we can kind of include this in the budget, it might just make things easier for them and easier for sitting councils.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four.
Number four is to approve the purchase and installation of a police cruiser emergency equipment from MHQ Inc. of Middletown, Connecticut, under state contract number 16PSX0033, for a price not to exceed $51,066.37. Mr. Simon's are here?
Okay, I have a motion.
I want a motion first, okay. Move to approve the purchase and installation of police cruiser emergency equipment from MHQ Inc. of Middletown, Connecticut, under the state contract 116PSX0033, for a price not to exceed $51,067.37.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion on this? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Number five.
Authorize the temporary town manager to enter into the coalition agreement for the period of July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2020. This is a group that has got together to look at the benefits for, the insurance benefits going forward for the next four years. Chris Monroe and Denise Parsons are here to discuss that.
Okay, great. Hi, Denise, thanks.
Hi there. In your kits that you got, you got a copy of the plan design for the next four years. So this coalition group, as you know, six years ago got together, and these are the presidents of all the town unions to negotiate pension, I'm sorry, not pension benefits, medical benefits for each one of the unions for the period of time that they lock in. So we're looking at the next four years, based on healthcare reform, based on trying to save costs on our healthcare premiums, we are trying to push our employees to the HSA option. So we've designed this, and they've come to agreement on splitting the premium for the HSA and the Century Preferred Plan, putting a larger spread between, and hoping for a push to get folks to migrate into the lower-cost HSA plan.
I just have a question for Kate. You sent out a new one with a different date, right?
Yes. It's going to be the four years.
Okay.
So it would be from July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2022.
22?
Yes.
I have extra copies.
Or 21?
All right.
22?
22.
Okay.
All right. We went for a four-year to try to lock it in.
Or is that 221 would be four years?
It's 221.
221?
Oh, I corrected it on, I'm sorry. Never mind. I corrected it on the agenda, not on the other thing. I apologize.
I have some questions.
Yes.
Just questions around plan design, guarantees offered. This is a long contract for health plans. Four years is, I mean, so much can change in the next year, we don't know what's happening. So what type of guarantees are we being offered that if plan design, we're seeing, you know, large trends, or we're not kind of getting what we had hoped for it, that we can go back and look at plan design? And what about admin fees? Where are we with admins fee?
In terms of the Anthem product?
Yeah.
I think that we have some lock-ins on administrative fees from last program.
We do. We competitively marketed the account last year.
Okay.
So we did secure from Anthem a three-year lock-in on the admin fees.
Okay.
So that at least covered the first two years of this agreement. And then beyond that, it becomes a source of negotiations from an admin standpoint. But what we tried to do in terms of our projections is we tried to build into some of the logic, some conservative estimates on where we thought the costs would go in the second, the third, the fourth year. An example of that is we looked at historically what our increases have been over the prior years, and we budgeted a 10 percent increase in each of the next three years. We reflected the fact that on the HSA, we'd be reducing our contribution to the HSA in subsequent years. And then we also made sure we factored in the fact that there's some upward push on the Century Preferred cost share. It's currently set at 15 percent. It goes to 20 percent in year one, 20 to 23 in year two, 23 to 25 in year three, and 25 to 27 in year four. So the expectation is that if you look at it over the next three years, we do have some budgetability. We did some modeling that we shared with members of each bargaining unit. If you look at the first into the second year, we're expecting an increase of about 1 percent. Second into the third year, we're looking at an increase of about 4 percent. And into the fourth year, we're looking at an estimated increase of a little bit less than 7 percent. So we do think that if the assumptions hold, and they are somewhat conservative in nature, that we will have certainly some budget stability over the term of the contract.
Okay, because my concern is that rate guarantee lasts for two years. You come back, and I know it's an admin fee versus a premium, which is, which is a little bit more, you know, doable. But if you come back with a, you know, 25 percent, 30 percent increase, that's really going to hamper whoever's sitting on this council two years from now, and if we're locked in, there's nothing we can really do about it at that point, right? I mean, we are locked in for four years.
Well, we, this is the plan design for the employees. We can still go back and take Anthem out, but with all the.
Okay. That, I think that was my, that was my concern, is that if we're stuck with these plan designs for four years, with, with an admin, admin fee attached to it, there's potential for some liability there.
We also have a caveat at the very end of this, where if there is a year that we have a 10 percent or more increase, we can go back and open it back up and ready to go.
Okay, good. Okay, perfect. That's perfect.
On the last.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to, so last I checked, we are self-funded, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Cool.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
Just a question on the wellness incentive. It gives some details, but that they would do some age-appropriate screenings and physician certification. Is there any other incentive type of things, like there's the step programs that we've seen in the past?
You mean the walking program?
Yes.
That is not part of this. We didn't tie into a financial incentive for folks to participate in that plan. We did not do it this past year. It's been an enormous amount of work and a big undertaking. I believe that we had a town, it was Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, and then the whole town had gotten together, and they worked through that program, but it was less employees involved. If we do end up looking into that, we'd have this committee kind of start and push that wellness again. But the wellness incentive to get the financial benefit is clearly devoted to your health and your screenings, and trying to get early diagnosis of things so that we can attempt to save money, because the thought is if you diagnose something early, you have less cost to correct or take care of that issue.
And it's evidence-based that by physicians signing off on it is what I see in here, right?
Absolutely. Yes.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
On the wellness program. Are we using, are you all using a vendor at Cafe Well, or anything along those lines? Is there a website that they can log this stuff in? It's all paper?
This is, it's not a website, and it's, it's very user-friendly. When we tried to establish this, there are lots of folks that you can purchase a plan from that will administer this upwards of $30,000 a year. That's not what we were looking for. We were looking to encourage our employees to go out, get your physical, get your cholesterol checked, get all of the things you're supposed to do on an annual basis done. So our screening process is very simplistic. There's one form, you bring it to your doctor, there's a list of things that Anthem says that you need to get done based on your age. The doctor verifies that they've done those things, they sign off on it, I collect them, I make sure every member of the plan is in there, and we give them their credit.
Okay, and maybe Anthem doesn't offer an online tool to use?
No, unfortunately, they do not. You know, they have a series of wellness programs, but they don't really have that online portal where a member could go in and look at whether they're compliant or not. The irony is, you look at Anthem as an example, they have the state of Connecticut account. Connecticut Care is actually the vendor that manages the compliance for Anthem and United members. So the only carrier out there that has a very good website, where they take in claim information, whether it's from Connecticut Care members or any other carrier, is Connecticut Care, where it's a very simple, easy format. But you would think that the carriers would be out ahead of this. But they're actually lagging when it comes to how you measure results from a compliance standpoint.
Okay. And how, oh, I'm sorry. How has, have you been getting, I mean, are people actually going out and doing that and returning them to you?
Oh, absolutely. The first year, we probably, and we only have about 160 folks, because this is only on the town plan, doesn't include the board of ed. The first year, we had about 35 completed. The second year, it went up to about 55, and I anticipate as we move folks into the HSA, that money becomes more valuable because it goes right into their HSA account. I anticipate we'll get a larger percentage increase. And we have had lots of folks come and thank us for forcing them, because they've gotten spouses to go to the doctors who would never go before, because now there's a financial reason to do it. So we're hoping that it will grow.
Good. Okay.
So the unions agreed to this, correct?
Yes.
And every, so you guys have agreed, the unions have agreed, it's, this is a final agreement, everybody is on board, this is something that everybody's happy about, correct?
Right. If this is voted yes, we will start our full board education in the next month or two to start getting everybody to understand how the plan works. But all of the unions have agreed and voted on it.
Excellent. That's good.
Okay. Anything else? All right, so thank you. Make a motion on this?
Move to authorize the temporary town manager, Mr. Healy, to enter into the coalition agreement for the period from July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2021.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
So moved. Abstention, one abstention. Okay. All right. Motion carries, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. You're here again, right?
I'll go for the next one.
Yes. Number six.
Number six is to approve the contract between the Town of Berlin and the Middle Management Association for the period of July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2019. Information you were given, how changes in the contracts. And Denise Parsons is here to discuss it.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm not sure there's much more to add than what's on there. They are looking for two and a quarter for each of the three years. We did extend to them the family medical leave for, I'm sorry, not family, family sick leave for five days. This middle management group does not have that benefit right now at all, so if they have a sick family member, they have to use their own vacation or personal time, they can't use sick time benefits. Blue collar, white collar nurses and police all have a family benefit linked to their contract, so this is sort of to build consistency. And then the other piece, the carryover vacation, was really a town proposal that we wanted because their current contract allowed them carryover, but it didn't limit the number of weeks that they could carry over. So this is trying to put a reduction in the number of vacation time that they can carry over from one year to the next.
Any questions of Denise, while she's up there?
Whether you can answer that or our finance director, either way, I'm looking to see what does that impact us in this first upcoming budget year, and maybe even impact on this year. But I think the two and a quarter, or the percentage represents each year, and it's retroactive to July 1, and I just want to see what the impact is going to be with our budget.
Annually, with fringe benefits, it's worth about $75,000. It will be worth about $150,000 in this budget, because we are coming in for, 18, 19 is the second year since the contract expired. So it's a bit of an anomaly in the first period.
Another question is, is there a way on these in the future that we could not run into the situation where we're paying for the previous year in the next year's budget? What's the plan on that going forward?
I would say the plan would be to negotiate starting earlier. You know, our white-collar contract is coming up at the end of this fiscal year, so I would So I would think, as we come out of the budget process, that would be an area of focus to try to address that contract and move it forward. You know, the more extreme case, which we'll also talk about later on tonight, is certainly the police contract entering the third year, so that becomes certainly a more significant item. What I will say is, each year, we do budget in, in the town-wide expense line. When you look, we do accrue for the increase. So while we will have a two-year amount to pay, we actually did budget that in this year's current operating budget. And even in the case of the police, where we've skipped to a third year, we take that accrual and we put it in a reserve fund. So we have put the money aside for those previous years. It's really the current year where we see the budget impact.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Just standard step increases with this contract? Okay.
This group does have 21 steps.
Okay.
So there's a large number of folks who are not at the top, but yes, it's step increase plus the two and a quarter.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so let's make a motion.
Move to approve the contract between the Town of Berlin and the Middle Management Association for the period of July 1st, 2016, through June 30th, 2019.
Any, any, a second on that?
A second.
Any further discussion? There are none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, number seven.
Next one is to approve the 2017 Timberland golf course rates and the policy change that's presented in your, in the outline. John Hook is here to go over that.
Okay, great.
Everyone should have received in their packet of information the proposed season pass rates, cart rates, proposed daily fees, leagues, proposed specials, and course comparison. One footnote, which I apologize for, Timberland has a, has a one in there for a footnote. Those are 2017 rates, as opposed to the other courses are 2016 rates. Just to begin here, in 2016, we introduced a, a special called a sunrise special. And what that special was geared towards, it was geared towards 18-hole play early in the morning from 7:00 to 9:00, Monday through Friday. And what this did is, we needed a policy change in order to allow this special to exist. And the policy change was nine-hole plays could not be booked on the 18-hole side. Walk-up was still available. Nine-hole play could be booked after one, after 10 o'clock on that side. It gets somewhat confusing if you want to put yourself to sleep reading the agenda item. But, and the success of this, of this special, we generated close to $100,000 in this one category, so it was very successful. And because of the success of this special, the commission decided to extend the sunrise special to 10:00 a.m. So it's running now from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And what this did was eliminate the ability to book nine-hole tee times completely on the 18-hole side. But people could still walk up and get a tee time on the 18-hole side, because there's still plenty of available times on that side, on the 18-hole side. If there's any questions on that, I can try and answer those now.
Just on that, the $100,000, that's additional?
It, it was additional revenue that we hadn't foreseen in that particular category. But in that, in that time slot, there could have been nine-hole play, there could have been some 18-hole play in that category. But when we introduced this special, in that one special, we generated just about $100,000 in that one special.
Okay.
Some of the key policy and rate changes, again, was the early morning sunrise special. And we increased this fee for this sunrise special from $30 to $35. And just in that one category, we had 3,526 plays, which will equate to just over $17,000 in additional revenue for, just by increasing that one category by $5. And again, on weekdays, nine-hole reservations would only be accepted from 7:00 to 9:00, Monday through Friday, on the offside, which would be the, excuse me, on the nine-hole side. People, again, could still walk up and get a tee time on the 18-hole side. We looked at some areas that were somewhat slow times, and weekend afternoons after 1:00 was somewhat of a slow time. So we decided to introduce the lunch special on the weekend afternoons after 1:00. So we're hoping to generate some tee times on, during that slow time. Couple of things we eliminated was the outing comeback coupon and the early bird special. And that was basically just due to lack of participation. And through these, through the increases, if you look through all the different spreadsheets there, we're looking at approximately a $38,000 to a $40,000 increase in revenue through these increases.
Okay. You know, I know, I know we had some talk last year in budget time about, you know, the golf course and making money, losing money. Remember, we had some of those discussions, and we had that $50,000 figure floating around somewhere that we lost that much, right? Is that? I mean, I don't know if we ever really got to the, the bottom of that, but I know there's always issues with town services being char, right? I mean, there's town services that get charged
That's correct.
To you guys, right?
Yes.
Could you just elaborate? So explain that just a little bit, maybe, I don't know, if Lynn or John, or like, so how do we, you know, I know we don't want to have a losing proposition out there. I know we've got some fee increases here, but how do we look this year? I mean, you said you got that $100,000 extra, right? Was that extra, but that's not?
Not necessarily, it, in that, again, in that one category, it was $100,000 more. We, we did a really, I think, a good job increasing, that was, again, a really slow time. We might have done $10,000 in that category previously. As far as town services are concerned, when building maintenance comes up to the golf course, they charge us for their services.
Yeah.
Again, I believe that's on paper, Lynn, if you want to jump in here. So whether that's part of the losing proposition or not, it's debatable, I guess.
I mean, I've heard both sides. I, I don't, yeah, I don't know either. I mean, I know a lot of this will be, I guess we can discuss this during our budget talks, but while you're here, you got a couple of extra questions?
I think with the, with the increase in the, in the fees, approximately $40,000, and if we, that could almost wash out a good portion of the 50, if we did lose $50,000 last year. So I, I think we would be in pretty good shape. Again, we, we eliminated three full-time people over the last four years, which was approximately $250,000 we cut from our labor budget. And so I think obviously that was a big help. So we're getting close to, very close to breaking even.
Right, and not having the benefit of the history myself, but like, going back years, we ever, in the plus category? We've always been in the negative? We've always been negative there?
Going back, probably, oh, there, yeah, you snuck up behind. I would say probably 19, no.
I wouldn't say anything. No.
All right.
It, it has always been in a negative standpoint. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, we got it. It's always been negative. Yeah, I heard that a lot.
Okay, it's always been negative. But the thing is, in the past year, just, it's just kind of anecdotal recall, I think we've seen numbers in the area of $200,000 difference between revenue and expense. And John, with the changes he's made, plus what we're trying to do is, is market the course a little bit more aggressively. We're not making any right turns. We're trying to look at what we're getting and tweaking. He's got it down to like roughly $50,000 on the books, the other town services that you were asking about or mentioned here. At one point in time, back in the old days of Gary Clinton, who was, who left here in 2002 as the finance director, they were looking at the possibility of the golf course being an enterprise fund. Now, as an enterprise fund, it's got it, it's, has to pay for itself. It can't operate in the red. Wittenberry Hills in Bloomfield is in a enterprise fund right now, and they're having, I think there's some issues there with, with their P and Ls. But we, again, we're, we're trying to push the golf courses. As John mentioned, we, he mentioned the slow tee ti, slow times Saturday afternoons. One of the golf courses in the town immediately to our north has dead Saturday and Sunday afternoons. And we've tried to focus on getting special rates for play during that time. Having what, like a grandparent, grandchild events, specials, that they would come out and play, family specials, to try to get people out on the course at, at that point in time. And it's, you know, it, I think we're getting, we're getting there. It's hard to say. Golf is not seeing the growth that we had 10, 15 years ago. I think the interest is more in families right now, and family, and golf takes a lot of time. The more we can get families out there, it's gonna, it's gonna help us.
Yes.
Sorry, no, did you have something to add? No?
I was just gonna add, as, as of, when the bond was paid off of this past July, that allows us the $65,000 or $63,000 approximately to perform capital projects on the golf course. So we won't necessarily be coming back to the town looking for funds to do tree work or do cart paths, things like that. So that's going to be funded by the one and $2 charge that's charged to the golfer. So it's kind of a pay, a pay-as-you-go type of system. So I think that's going to save us some money also.
Okay. Good.
So we had had some people come forward to talk about the seasons passes. Has that change been made in the new rates? Is, like, is the seasons pass all the way through?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so it went back to the way it was pre-last year?
That was one of the things, we, we tried two things last year, the sunrise special and then the season pass termination date as of November 30th. That didn't work. So we rescinded that one, but the sunrise special was a big success.
Awesome. Good to hear it. Thank you.
On the sunrise special, leagues are aware of this, leagues are okay with this? They know about it?
That will not affect leagues, because the sunrise special ends at 10 o'clock, and if someone was to play, they would be done by 2 o'clock at the latest.
Okay.
Leagues don't start until 3:00, so.
Okay. And I just have one more question about the, being in the, the red or not. And I don't know if either of you know, if anyone knows, what would you say the percentage of municipal courses are that are, are making a profit?
I would say very little, and I won't name any names, but I know a few of them are over $100,000, $150,000 in the red.
Okay. And I think there's a school of thought out there about, you know, standard of living in your town, if you're willing to pay for something like a golf course, similar to our open space area that needs to be maintained and paid for. So I think it's, you know, up to the town and what they want to do with that. But I think you all have made strides over the last four or five years, and we've closed that gap considerably with some good management decisions. So I think we're getting closer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I'm gonna have to upset myself due to a possible conflict of interest, as I bought a seasons pass for a family member for next year, so I upset myself.
Lenny, just a quick question. You know, we, we were able to get someone on the Park and Recs committee that would represent the golf course, and I just want to know what their thoughts were in accepting the, the rate increases. Was there a lot of pushback?
No, in fact, Peter DeFazio was the one who was appointed. He's been, I think the last two or three meetings, we've been very heavily involved with the rate discussions. And he's been a major contributor in that, and it's, it's hard to say. You're not going to get any pushback until the, the golfers see the particular rates. But his reaction is, he feels that the increases were fair, fair and reasonable, and, and really, I guess justified, you could say.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So one of the concerns I had heard is that the capital, that additional dollar per round is, is going just into the, into the funds, not to a designated accounting. Is it going to a designated accounting location, similar to the capital non-recurring? And is, is that identifiable for them, so we can point that out to them?
Yes, yes, it is. It's, it's got its own fund established. We know how much is going in there, and John would be spending directly out of there and specifically for capital projects. Because this is one of the things, with the bond being paid off, the golfers were concerned, I guess one way to say it, about continuing to pay the one and $2. And the general feeling that, that we get on the commission, and I think John gets as well, is that they, they're willing to pay it as long as they can see it going into the course and into capital projects at the course.
Okay. Just a follow-up question to that. So any of those particular projects anticipated are presented in the budget and presented before us, if, you know, if they're over $10,000, that type of thing? Who approves those project capital investments? Is that done by the Park and Rec? What's the function of that right now?
A lot, a lot of the projects are done internally, and what you're, what you're doing is paying for materials. And the same criteria that applies to the rest of purchasing in the town, the, with, that that $10,000 level would apply to these as well. If we were bringing in a contractor to do paving, it, he, John would have to still go through the same procedure as far as bidding the job out.
In other words, we would come back to the council, if it was over $10,000, over $25,000, but it would be maybe, no, $10,000 advertised for the bid, and then sealed bids, and then come back to the council for the approval of the, the bid.
Okay. Anything else?
Hope it's a break-even year.
Let's hope. Let's hope that we can, we can do it. All right. Let's have a motion on this.
Okay, move to approve the 2017 Timberland golf course rates and policy change as presented.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? There are none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
One abstention, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jack, number?
Number eight. Adopt a 2017, 2018 fee schedule as proposed by the Revenue Committee, including the updated townwide refund policy language, and to allow amendment for, of the 2017, 2018 fee schedule to include the updated regional health district fees and passport fees when they are made available. And Kevin Delaney is here to discuss.
Hi, Kevin.
The Revenue Committee met in December to review the existing fee schedule. And as a reminder, the Revenue Committee is comprised, it's a cross-functional team of department heads who lead the various departments that are revenue generating within the town. After the December meeting, the department heads went back to their respective commissions, reviewed the various fee proposals, obtained approval from the commission, and tonight we're seeking council approval for the fee schedule. You should have received a few documents. One is the full fee schedule with changes highlighted. There are a few changes that I'll just summarize quickly here. There are two new fees. One is the passport fee. This is a new fee because it is a new service being offered by the library. The second is a certificate of building compliance. The Building Inspector's Office has seen a growing need to do building compliance, for example, making sure the roof is structurally sound if something is going to be added on to it. And so this is a fee to help defray some of the costs and, and deal with some of the increased demand that the Building Inspector's Office has been experiencing. The schedule has one fee removed. There's a change in state statutes, which no longer allows a permit penalty fee, which had previously been on there, so we've removed the fee to be in compliance with that statute. There are a few increases as well. The golf fees, as Jonathan just spoke about, Parks and Rec has increased some of their fees between $5 and $10 for fields, pavilions, and lights. It's been a few years since this was increased, and part of the objective is to increase reasonably over time, rather than wait a long period of time and have a steep increase. So that's part of what Parks and Rec is trying to do. Health Department fees were updated. The Health Department is independent of the town, and so this just simply reflects what they have for fees. Their fees are not updated until April, so the previous schedule that was presented was approved prior to that. So this is just updating for what was approved in April of 2016. And then finally, the cell tower fees went up. Per the contract, we get a 3% increase for cell tower rental, and so this is just updating the fees for those contracts. We do have two fees that are expected to increase. As I mentioned, the Health Department increases in April. The federal government has indicated that they are going to increase the $25 passport fee to $35. So one of the requests is to be able to update the fee schedule when those occur at a future time. And then finally, the last piece, the Revenue Committee had quite a bit of discussion about the refund policy. Last year, the council approved a townwide refund policy, and we'd like to have two enhancements to that policy, and this is at the bottom of the last page on the schedule. One is, we want to maintain the 10% refund, but increase the maximum to $50. This would only apply if the initial fee were five hundred dollars. So if we had a sixty dollar fee, it's for example in a Parks and Rec event, that would still be a six dollar fee. This just increases the ceiling a little bit. The second part, in an interest of being more customer-centric and making sure we can move refunds along, if the refund follows prescribed procedures and is approved by the respective commission, we would ask to be able to grant that rather than having to come back to council seeking approval for that. Sometimes it can take thirty days or more for a refund. That's fairly modest and so one of the things we'd like to do is be a little bit more focused on the folks who are participating in the programs in the town.
Okay. Any questions, Jeff?
I'm just gonna abstain on this also.
Oh, why, you're paying a fee or something? What, you're paying the golf fee?
Yeah, includes the golf fee.
Gotcha. Anybody else? Question?
I just have a question. So the documents that we got just highlight the changes, but it does not indicate how it changed, up, down, how much?
There is a summary slide that you would have received as well which identifies the changes.
Okay. Is there any way, I mean, I don't think it matters, but I just wanna be prepared in case we get calls saying you went up from sixty dollars to three hundred dollars. I don't think that occurred.
Right, nothing changed that dramatically.
But just if there, if there, maybe if you could even just highlight kind of the ones that were the larger, larger changes.
And I can update before publishing it to include the change at a column that just has the dollar change.
I think that, that might be a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
So is there any analysis if we had the same type of year as the previous year, what these would have in an impact and a net positive? Because it would be, you know, all these fees for the most part are going up, some of it is an expense through the health districts. But was there any dollar impact overall estimated during this analysis? Or was it just a gut feel on each one of these?
I'd say it was, there was an element within those closest to each of the departments. It was a bit of gut feel. There was, golf as an example, Jonathan spoke about the amount that would be expected from that should the season continue. The Parks and Rec fees would be a little bit more difficult because we're dealing with pavilion rentals, lights. There is an element of recurring, but there's also some inconsistency, so it would be hard to kind of measure where that would go.
No, I think you could look at an average over time and see what those are. So I just wanted to see if you had had a, had some numbers that had been put together.
No, not on the Parks and Rec.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, so.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Move to adopt the 2017-2018 fee schedule as proposed by the revenue committee, including the updated townwide refund policy language and to allow the amendment of the 2017-2018 fee schedule to include the updated regional health district fees and passport fees when they are made available.
Okay. Second on this?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Oh. One abstention, yes, thank you. Okay. Number nine.
Number nine is to authorize the temporary town manager to retain the services of Joseph Fazi LLC to prepare bond authorization documents in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, and authorize the temporary town manager to schedule and advertise for February twenty-first, 2017, at seven P.M. to hold a public hearing on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance appropriating five hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of self-contained breathing apparatus and authorizing the issue of five hundred thousand dollars of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose. And Jim Simons is here to discuss that.
Okay. Yeah.
This is, sorry, a question. I just wanna make sure that this is the thing that we talked about. We had, we had that meeting last year and then remember.
Yeah, I believe it is, but we'll make sure Jim confirms that for us, yeah.
Cool.
This is the self-contained breathing apparatus of the firefighters where there are some time limits put on the apparatus and the cylinders and they're becoming at the point where they're going out of service. They'll start going out of service January one of next year. So we wanna have things in place.
Awesome.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim while he's up here? Yes.
Just to highlight, I think you came in lower than what was expected and what we budgeted, right?
We originally, when we went to estimate the exact same numbers of what we currently had, we were looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand, somewhere around there. We came in at the actual bid that we're still reviewing is four eighty-nine by a hundred thousand dollars. And we put in that little bit of contingency as we mishash around the figures. We did that a number of different ways. Competitive bid, reducing the amount of cylinders, reducing the amount of SCBAs themselves. We did those two by reorganizing the fire service and how we actually operate with these cylinders. Instead of having four individual groups of cylinders, we decided that we would go with one group of cylinder and we would more or less make a mass service unit that would take care of all those instead of having individual stockpiles. We reduced the number of seats within apparatus, which meant that we could reduce the number of SCBA or air packs that are in those apparatus. So there was a number of things that we did operationally along with the competitive bid that were allowed us to come in considerably less than where we were.
Yes.
I love that you guys were able to do that. That's awesome. That's, so I know I had mentioned the lean process a while back and David mentioned that he was familiar with it and that's exactly what that is and that's, that's awesome. Finding efficiencies in places where you can and I appreciate that you guys do that.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? If not, take a motion on this?
Okay, move to authorize the temporary town manager to retain the services of Joseph Fazi LLC to prepare the authorization documents in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of self-contained breathing apparatus and authorize the temporary town manager to schedule and advertise for February twenty-first, 2017, at seven P.M. and to hold a public hearing on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance appropriating five hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of self-contained breathing apparatus and authorize the issue of five hundred thousand dollars in bonds to the town, of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof of making the temporary borrowings for such a purpose.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
All right, any further discussion or questions for Jeff? Hearing none? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. I think you're still here.
Still here.
Right? Yep. Number ten.
Number ten, approve the purchase of fire department protective clothing in the amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars utilizing the Capitol Region Council of Governments bid number six hundred and fifty protective clothing and bid six fifty-one protective accessories.
Okay. So?
I think the important thing here is we are maintaining the standard that we requested and received from the council to be within compliant of NFPA with the other requirements. There is a big change in protective clothing coming next year as the next update is coming out from NFPA. At that point, we will probably be looking to go out to bid and redo everything or reset our specifications to the new standard. But currently, that's not out yet, so we're still underneath the older, three-year-old standard and there's nothing really that's changed. We'll be replacing a group of turnout coats, turnout pants, the helmets and the boots.
What does that new standard mean? Did just, the specs are?
The specifications, what they do is they looked, there were trends in the fire service and they upgraded the specifications or what the requirements are for that turnout, piece of turnout gear. And then they set standards for that, for us to follow. It may be that there's more bloodborne pathogen resistance, more thermal liners, things like that.
Okay. Any further questions for Jim? Hearing none? Motion on this?
Move to approve the purchase of fire department protective clothing in an amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars utilizing the Capitol Regional Council of Governments bid number six fifty protective clothing and bid number six fifty-one protective accessories.
Second on this?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number eleven.
Approve the purchase of auto parts using the above State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract number one-six-P-S-X-zero-zero-three-zero from Napa Auto Parts for the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, sure. Any questions or anything you wanna add to this? It's pretty self-explanatory.
Pretty straightforward. For the fleet services, we purchase a number of different auto parts from different vendors. As we begin to get to the threshold amount of ten thousand dollars, we're at somewhere around eighty-five hundred, we then come back and we request to go up to the, up to the next level. Places we purchase parts from around here or generally, we're using TaskAford for Ford parts. We were using Monaco Ford prior to that and now using TaskAford. We use Napa, Middletown, which is their warehouse. We're going to go back and begin to use Advanced Auto, which used to be Carquest, of veterans driving in Britain. But as, as those amounts come up, that's what we, we come back for.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to approve the purchase of auto parts using this above State of Connecticut DAS Services contract one-six-P-S-X-zero-zero-three-zero from Napa Auto Parts for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a good question, Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
This is not, this is not changing your budgeted amount. This is still within budget, right?
Correct. Okay, good. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number twelve.
There you go.
Yeah.
Approve the transfer of funds not to exceed twenty thousand dollars from vehicle reserve to the passenger cars account for the purchase of one used SUV four-by-four and authorize Jim Simons, fleet manager, to purchase a used SUV four-by-four for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars with the approval of temporary town manager.
Okay, thanks.
So we have a old building inspector's car, which actually started off as a police car. Went for a police car, went to the golf course, rode out a few years out there, then was turned over to the building inspectors. The building inspectors use a SUV or four-by-four because they're going into construction sites and we got tired of pulling them out of the mud. So that's why they got a four-wheel drive. The car has a hundred and seventy-six thousand miles on it. It's fifteen years old. It came in for a routine vehicle inspection and vehicles come in underneath mileage when they go and fuel up their vehicle, they actually enter mileages into the computer system. Those mileages then flag different service levels. Being that this car was a downgraded car, and what I mean by a downgraded car, it goes from the high use to low use, it doesn't come in that often. But it did come in for a vehicle inspection. Came in for a vehicle inspection, the technician found that the frame on the rear of the vehicle where the rear suspension mounts to was rotted, probably due to road salt and other components. Called me over, I looked at it, I said, no, it's at its end of its life. It's served the town well, it's time to put it out to pasture. It's a safety hazard at this point and it's not worth fixing at a hundred and seventy-six thousand miles. So then comes the goal of trying to replace this vehicle or find a vehicle that would be suited for that position in the building inspectors. There's nothing really around. SUVs are very hard to come by. With the advent of the police department changing over to all SUVs for the patrol, we're gonna have a abundance of those down the road. There's nothing out here and there's nothing immediately coming off the road that I can replace that vehicle with. We currently have one building inspector, we just hired the second one, so we need to have two vehicles in there. So I kinda look around and I said, well, what am I gonna do? One of the options that I have is there, we have a vehicle reserve account that we put funds that, from the sale of vehicles into this account for just this purpose. Vehicle is totaled, a vehicle needs to be replaced that is off, not funded, we can utilize that money. Well, do I really wanna go out and purchase a new vehicle or a new vehicle is the best vehicle for this? Probably not. Probably a small, compact SUV that you can pick up. And I'm thinking somewhere fifteen thousand dollars that we can pick up a good newer two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen small SUV, maybe a CRV or something like that. And that'll suit the individual. I talked to the individual as to would that meet his needs? They said yes. So that brings us here. Long and short.
Okay, questions, Jeff? Go ahead.
So the old vehicle, the one with the rotted-out rear suspension is, can that be like split up for parts or is it just totally in the junk?
It's, it'll actually be auctioned as non-roadworthy and we'll retain some money on it. The vehicle for, because of its age, really, there's nothing that we own in town that we can utilize the parts off of it.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions, Jeff?
Was there a look at any other SUVs in your fleet that could be reclassified for whoever's using them to be used, use a standard type of vehicle and utilize that instead?
There are four larger SUVs in the fleet. Two are ready to come off the road, the other two are halfway decent. We kinda looked it over and looked at the positions. Do the positions need to come out and follow weather? And the positions needed to be out and follow weather, we retained that vehicle in that position. So the simple answer is yes, we looked at all that, but there was nothing that we could really grab right away and not hurt those individuals or hurt that department's operation.
Okay. Okay, anything else? If not, let's have a motion on this?
Move to approve the transfer of funds not to exceed twenty thousand dollars from the vehicle reserve to the passenger's cars account for the purchase of one used SUV four-by-four.
I think we gotta do two. We gotta do two, right? So let's move on that. So second on that one?
Second.
Any discussion? We could combine them, I just, if I wanna combine them, a motion to combine them?
Okay.
All right.
Motion to combine them?
Yeah, all right. We'll just, we'll just move them, just move them together. Just go ahead and read the second one.
Okay, continue. Move to authorize James Simons, fleet manager, to purchase a used SUV four-by-four for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars with the approval of the temporary town manager, Mr. Healy.
All right, second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Number thirteen.
Authorize the temporary town manager to enter into a contract with LaRosa Construction Company in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and authorize the temporary town manager to enter into change orders if necessary to bring the total contract value not to exceed three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for the water control. Ray Jaramis here to answer any questions.
Okay. We have questions for Ray? Come on up, Ray, why not? You're here, yes, you're here, come on up.
Thanks for sitting through all this. So my question is, again, just a clarifying question that I ask every time water stuff comes up because I haven't figured it out yet. This expenditure will get paid for based on revenue taken in on water bills, correct? This is not going to affect our tax liability?
Correct.
Thank you.
That's it? I expected a little bit more, actually. Any other questions? Anything else? No? All right, so motion.
Move to authorize the temporary town manager to enter into a contract with LaRosa Construction Company in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand and authorize the temporary town manager to enter into change orders if necessary to bring the total contract value not to exceed three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars as this is the best interest of the town.
Okay, do you have a second on that?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thanks. Number fourteen, Jeff.
Authorize the temporary town manager to utilize the attached bid results for the equipment rental contract number two thousand seventeen dash sixteen when issuing future purchase orders in, to the seven lowest bidders depending on which one results in the lowest cost to the town. And what that means is we would select, if you look at the spreadsheet, you can see we can, we can pick and choose depending on the equipment we need. So we're asking that you approve those seven contractors, those seven bidders so we can pick and choose the least expensive.
Okay. All right. Okay, motion on this?
Move to authorize the temporary town manager to utilize the attached bid results for the equipment rental contract two thousand seventeen dash sixteen when issuing future the equipment rental contract 2017-16 when issuing future purchase orders to the seven lowest bidders depending on which one results in the lowest cost for the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Rachel.
If, because this motion says depending on which one results in the lowest cost to the town, I just want to make sure that if that individual is unavailable when we need them, we are authorized to use one of the other bidders. I just want to make sure in the language of the motion that that will allow the town manager to choose someone else.
Well, it's equipment, so assuming that the equipment's not available because it's leased or sold to someone else?
Being used someplace else, yep.
Then by definition, it wouldn't be the item that's the lowest cost to the town because it's not available, so it's fine.
Okay, all right.
Okay, Mayor.
I mean, another way to address that is that you make certain availability of that equipment to, but you tend to get higher prices when they come in. I mean, if we wanted to do a stipulation so that we'd have them available to us, I don't think that's part of this. It's something to think about, but again, the practice, I think, ends up with a higher cost because they have to have that item on reserve or available to us a certain percentage of the time.
I mean, you really can't do that with rental equipment. You can't ask an equipment dealer to keep a piece of equipment in inventory and give up the revenue on the hope that you may need it.
I mean, if you had a certain capital program going on, it may behoove us, but I don't think with this particular situation, we would need to do so.
Do we do a lot of rentals? Like, I mean, is it common or every day?
Not that, it's not that common, but it's good to have availability.
Sure.
And I think one of the things, if you remember last year, at one point, it was on Norton Road, we were doing some work and we don't have the type of equipment we needed for that particular process, so we actually have Tilk on to do it.
Yeah, I remember that.
This, in this instance, we may be able to go out, rent an excavator or rent a grader or something that we need in that project and then avoid having Tilk on and incurring their costs. We're trying to add some flexibility to what we do.
That's great. Okay, great. All right, a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right.
Number 15. Award contract 2017-15 for tree removal services to Distinctive Gardens and Tree Care of South Windsor at the rate of $1,090 per day and $147.50 per hour for emergency work and allow for the use of Northern Tree Services and Marchand and, I'm going to say, Foster Enterprises during the disaster situation. If it is deemed to be in the best interest of the town, funding will come from established line item accounts within the fiscal services 2016, 2017, and 2017, 2018 department budget through established unit pricing.
Okay. All right, any questions? Well, Jack, so it's pretty normal, right? Anything, nothing?
No, in fact, what we've done is adding a little flexibility. I've asked them to go out, in the past, we've generally had one contractor named. Oftentimes, you don't want to limit yourself to one contractor, particularly in emergency times. You want to be able to have the availability, go to multiple contracts because they may be tied up. And so we're requesting that you not only approve the lowest bid, which is consistently done before, and also I ask for a bid on a daily rate, which is oftentimes less expensive than an hourly rate. You know, if you ask somebody else to come out for a couple hours, they're going to charge you more than if they charge you a daily rate. So what you do is if you plan your work, you get a better rate and you give them a full day's worth of work. So we're asking for that flexibility. In the case of emergency, we can extend, we can extend the contract to other, the two other contractors we've asked for.
Excellent.
Okay. Great. All right, motion on this?
Move to award contract number 2017-15 for tree removal services to Distinctive Gardens and Tree Care of South Windsor at a rate of $1,090 per day and $147.50 per hour for emergency work and allow the use for Northern Tree Service and Marchand and Foster Enterprises during the disaster situation if it is deemed to be in the town's best interest. Funding will come from the established line item accounts within the fiscal years 2016, 17, and 2017, 18. Department budgets through established unit prices.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Next up.
Number 16. Accept the favorable recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the 8-24 review of the Spruce Brook Road Bridge Project as per the Connecticut General Statutes and additionally authorize the temporary town manager to sign any and all documents of the State of Connecticut Local Bridge Program required for reconstruction of both Spruce Brook Road Bridge and Burnham Street Bridge replacement projects.
Okay. It's been put off for a while, huh? Any questions? Any questions on this? Before we make our motion? No? Hearing none? Go ahead, motion on this?
Move to have the Town Council accept the favorable recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the 824 review of the Spruce Brook Road Bridge Project as per the Connecticut General Statutes and additionally authorize the temporary town manager to sign any and all documents of the State of Connecticut Local Bridge Program required for the reconstruction of the Spruce Brook Road Bridge Project and the Burnham Street Bridge replacement projects.
Second? On that?
Second.
Let's get your name on there from way back. Secretary. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, there you go. Any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, yeah, number 17.
Number 17. Substitute Jack Healy, temporary town manager, as the authority to apply for grants, enter into grant agreements and to execute other specific contracts on behalf of the Town of Berlin, said authority having previously been authorized to former town manager Denise M. McNair.
Okay.
Okay.
I will repeat that. Move to substitute Jack Healy, temporary town manager, as the authority to apply for grants, enter into grant agreements and execute other specific contracts on behalf of the Town of Berlin, said authorizing having previously been authorized by the former town manager Denise M. McNair.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, appointments, we just have one. Kate, Ray, to fix, we just have to fix one.
Yeah, there was, because there was a late application on the Historic District, the thought was is to move Pam up as a regular member, but then the other application came in that night, so we couldn't see Pam as a regular member. You could only do it with a D, I mean, with an R or a U, she's a D, and she's fine with being an alternate. So we need to move, just appoint her as under number seven as an alternate, please. Okay. It was just a timing of all the applications come in and.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And we don't have to remove her from the regular position because she couldn't be seated at it. Okay?
All right, okay.
All right.
All right, so we're just going to nominate her?
Yes, please.
Okay, for the Historic District Commission alternate vacancy, I will nominate Alma Pethigo.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
May I just, clarity on that. Item six as an alt, or seven as an alternate was to 2020, or 2020, and seven was seven, eight was to 2021, so this was 20 until the term of 2020. Is that correct?
Yeah, I guess we just picked seven. I mean, it could be either, it could be either one, but.
Okay, I just.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure we are clear on that.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll have another spot come open.
Yeah, maybe we can move her up.
Just for the record.
Yeah, we'll, right, we'll consider we move her up to a permanent one if the other one's available, okay. All right, Town Manager's report.
Town Manager's report, essentially all I'm going to do is report is that I've been trying to meet with all of the department heads, go through the paperwork that Denise left, go over all her notes and meet with everybody and work on the budget with Kevin, primarily the business for the last week. And the other thing I want to do is just remind you that there's a ribbon cutting at Berlin High School at nine o'clock on Saturday.
Yes, very excited about that, thank you. It's okay, Kate. Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes.
Okay, if you could just send it to me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We did get that, we asked for that. Kevin did prepare a report and I'll send an email to everybody on the Town Attorney page.
What was the report? So we've had that question asked, so we might as well.
The report, at the last council meeting, there was a request that we prepare a report for the council at each of your meetings outlining the expenses for the legal fees for the town. And that was prepared and we will send it to you.
Okay, and it doesn't have to be every meeting, just one, please.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
That was a request at the last meeting.
Do we have the amount that we've spent so far?
Well, there are none.
There are none?
That's good, that's all.
Other than, other than your retainer?
But if you can, other than the retainer.
Just the retainer, okay, great. Okay, good.
At least from me, I don't know about other attorneys at the town. I don't have any information on what other attorneys at the town uses.
No, they were just asking about, yes, fine.
Right.
We'll send it out, as I know Jack can send it out.
Okay, good.
I just want to highlight, Jack, that it did appear on the town website that there is a list of new roads that are going to be worked on this year and that you have a plan hopefully going forward because people ask us all the time.
Yeah, we did post the anticipated road paving scheduled for this upcoming year and that we have, we basically, I have a group of four of us who are meeting every two weeks to go over the roads. We've planned out for the next, for about four or five years now on looking at the roads and planning, so we can anticipate. If someone calls us, is my road on a plan, we can tell them, "Yeah, your road's on the plan." It's not this year, but it's in the plan for 2019 or '20 or something like that, so we can at least let the residents know. That seems to help them, you know, instead of just telling them what we don't know, we can tell them, "This is the date we think you're going to have your road done."
Nice question, I'm sorry.
I know that there was a comment earlier about bonding for roads. Where are we in terms of what's left in that bond? I know we had gone out quite a few years ago for that and we're spending close to a million dollars a year on roads, is that correct?
Yeah.
And I don't know if Kevin, if you know what's left in that road bond, if we have enough for the next year or two or we're going to have to anticipate how that's going to affect budget. Yeah, you need to come on, sorry.
When we get to the next budget, we'll be seeking additional funding.
Yeah, okay, that's what I.
We do have a million dollars that council did authorize last year for bridges, but roads, we have to go back for more.
Okay, we're out of that bond stuff, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions for Jack? Yes?
Just one. So I know you're working on the budget and stuff, are we all ready for Thursday? Everybody's big snowstorm, six to 12 inches?
Yes.
Everything's good, all right. Just checking.
We're ready and, you know.
I thought you were working on plow on Thursday. You told me we were going to save some money. You know, plow on Thursday?
I'll plow on Thursday and then we'll be replacing curbing on Friday.
So if we don't plow, we don't have to replace curbing?
I can save the money.
There you go, right there.
Everybody's got four-wheel drive now anyways.
Okay, nothing else on that? So special committee reports, did you just have a audit committee?
Yeah, we had a brief audit committee meeting and I think we're going to have some time to absorb that and we have, maybe have a meeting pretty soon, another week or two just to get that in our heads.
Okay, and we just had a, we had our ordinance committee and discussed several issues. The leash law, we're still looking at some things with that and.
Chickens.
The chickens, we're going to discuss, have some discussions moving forward, planning and zoning about that. Our blight ordinance, we talked about that, we're going to, you know, ordinance is a pretty good ordinance, we're going to, I think, change some of the wording on some of the notices. Corporation Council will help us with that and we have that blighted property in town, which we discussed, which we have to start the process all over again because it wasn't completed, so we will start that process over again and hopefully move down the ordinance with that and see where that goes with, to try and clean that up. Is there a fourth or something else? What was it?
There's one other thing.
Yeah, what was after blight? I remember something else at the bottom of that agenda.
It had to do with the 72, with the bidding.
Yes.
Oh, oh, yes, yes. Okay. What do we?
We said we needed more information.
That's right, we were going to look for more info.
We wanted to get the information.
That's right, that's right, yeah. I know we discussed that very briefly, but, okay. So we'll get some more info on that for our next ordinance meeting. Any other committee reports? Is that all? I think that's all that we had, right? Council Communications, yes, go ahead.
I know Jack already mentioned the ribbon cutting at the high school on Saturday, but it's nine o'clock, nine o'clock Saturday morning, there will be a short ceremony, some of our students will be performing and then there will be tours of high school if anybody would like to attend. And the only other thing I wanted to ask was at last meeting, we had discussed financial impact of the town manager position changing and I know we had discussed a stipend for the temporary town manager and I didn't see it on tonight's agenda, so just curious as to when we will be approving that and will it be retro to February 1st?
Yeah, I mean, we can add that to the agenda, but we were going to discuss a little bit of that in the town manager search, but we can either add that in, I guess, can we add that in?
If you decide on something, when you come out of executive session.
Oh, all right.
You would add, you would vote to add it onto the agenda and then at that point you can take your vote.
We'll do that, that's great.
And I'm sure, you know, Jeff will help you with that.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, Council Communications, anything else? Yes?
So I know I had asked at the last meeting, I know this is just our first one for February, so I know we have another one coming up, but the Standing Economic Development Report item, I just wanted to double check that that's going to be on for next.
Chris is coming next week, or next meeting, the 21st, I think it is.
Give us some information here.
And he also has some information on that, we're having a presentation on the transportation of the train station development there around the train station.
Perfect.
As well as whatever else he wants to report to us.
Awesome, that's great.
It was a little long, the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I figured, that's why I just wanted.
He was going to come tonight, but I said, "No."
Yeah.